All right, it is five o'clock and we will begin this meeting of the Placerville City Council for Tuesday, January 10th. Will everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome, everybody, on a wet and windy Tuesday. Hope everybody's doing all right out there, and we'll have more on that in a little bit. Can we go to roll call, please?
Councilmember Clarici?
Here.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Here.
Councilmember Nell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will go ahead and move to ceremonial matters in item 3.1. This is a motion for the City Council to adjourn the meeting in Cindy and appoint the new city manager as the temporary chair.
Okay. Thank you, councilmembers. I was looking for my gavel. I wanted to... At this time, as you know, it will call the meeting back to order, and I will, at this time, accept nominations for the mayor position.
I'd like to nominate Michael Saragosa as for mayor.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. I have to ask if there are any other nominations. Hearing none, I'll ask for roll call vote. Regina?
Councilmember Clarici?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Nell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll turn it back over to Mayor Saragosa.
That was too short. Oh, thank you. That was fast.
There's precedence lately. You just go on for days.
That's true. Oh, yeah, this is a good point. It could be like fifteen tries. That is true, yeah. It would be odd, but we can figure it out. All right, well, no, thank you, colleagues. I appreciate the vote of confidence. So now, we will, we will move on and for nominations for Vice Mayor.
I would like to nominate Jackie Nell for Vice Mayor.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Do we have any other nominations? All right, seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Nell?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Appreciate that.
Congratulations. All right, just going right through this. This is good. Okay, well, let's move on then to item four, which is closed session report. We don't have one this evening. So we will move to item five, which is the adoption of the agenda. Have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nell?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Moving on to item six, which are brief comments by the City Council, and I'll start with Councilmember Gottberg.
I just wanted to say that I hope everybody is doing okay with the storms, and I have no other comments tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Clarici?
Same on the storm thing. Kudos to staff and everyone, and lots of just folks out there that have been out helping clean things up, clean out drains. I've seen all sorts of people do sorts of great things. I do want to say, I went to the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser on Saturday, and as always, very impressed with the generosity and fellowship of this community. Absolutely remarkable, the people and folks and their ability to come together, and in this case, raise boatloads of money, which is, of course, great when you're, when you're there for fundraisers. So it was just a wonderful, wonderful event. And like so many we have, I mean, there's a number of them out there, and just, once again, the community, I'm never surprised and always impressed by what happens.
Did anyone come home with a totem pole or canoe this time?
No, no, they had a totem pole, but, you know, the problem, not the problem, it's good for those people, man, those things get expensive really fast, and there were no canoes. There were no canoes.
No canoes. I'm sorry I missed it this year.
Yeah, anyway, that's my comment.
All right. Councilmember Yarborough?
No comments at this time.
All right, Vice Mayor Nell?
No comments.
All right. I don't have any comments, but I was, I know Cleve was gonna do this later in the agenda, but I was gonna ask him now, just to kind of give a brief comments on sort of a storm, where we're at, and anything that wanted to relate to the public.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, just a brief comment. As you know, the worst that we had was the 30th and 31st New Year's Eve. We got hit very hard, overwhelmed our wastewater treatment plant. Want to compliment, however, our wastewater treatment plant, they, they did very well in how they handled it, given the circumstances. All the reporting has been done that is necessary concerning violations and et cetera. And through the rest of the week, they have handled it well. We have had some high flows still, none like we had that night. And most of the storms that have come through since then, I think this is the way I usually see it happens. We prepared, overly prepared, and then didn't get what we expected, which is fine with me. We like seeing that happen. We did have on Saturday night, right, Nick, a major tree that came down across Cedar Ravine and closed that road for the day and took power out to a large area from about 1:00 in the morning until around 7:00 at night, Sunday night. So we dealt with that and got through it. There were other, also other areas that were without power that day on the north side of the city, but we dealt with it, I mean, the best we can. That's all you can do. And my, my answer to the 30th and 31st, that was just, there's not a lot we can do. There's more water than our streams, our storm drains can handle. I think I mentioned, Rebecca can correct me if I'm wrong, normal storm drains are built to about a 10-year flood. Her estimate for this one was somewhere in the range of 350-year flood. The one, I think, in 17 was 150-year flood, was that where we were at?
130 years.
130-year flood, thank you. I knew it was in that range. So you can see the difference. I don't know how often we're gonna get 350-year floods, but they seem like they're coming more often than 350 years. So we, we are going to go back and evaluate based on this. I've asked staff to look at different issues that we observed during this time, and look at, perhaps, we need to look at those and come up with projects to plan for the future. So we'll take a look at that and see how we can move forward. We've got a lot of ideas of different things that happened. Again, today, again, we were expecting yesterday and today, heavy rains. Yesterday really didn't happen. Today, we've had some heavy rain, but nothing that's been overwhelming. I'm not aware, I'm looking at Nick, any flooding that we observed or Joe, even any street flooding. The times I was out, I didn't see any. I will say, we're not completely out of the woods yet. Looks like we get a kind of a two-day mini-break, and then starting again on, what, that'd be Friday, I guess, there's a chance for about four days where we get somewhere around an inch of rain if the forecasts come out. That's not overwhelming to us, but it'll still be a lot of rain. We'll have to stay on top of it, make sure drains are cleared. And again, I will want to publicly thank Nick and his staff, too. They're doing a great job keeping our drains clear. We're a small crew. We can't be everywhere all the time, but they do a great job of getting around. I was getting ready to drive down here about 4:30, I guess it was, and I saw one of his crew, actually Isaac, out clearing some drains on, out by the post office. So they're out there trying to keep things moving, and they're doing a great job with it. So if there's any questions, oh, I should probably also answer. We have, as you know, we extended the emergency at your special meeting last week, and we were following up on that. You probably heard that President Biden did declare an emergency and put in place potential for funds from FEMA. So we will be pursuing that. We have sent, Mr. Warren has sent a list to the state of what our potential damages and costs are, and they'll use that in determining what, what happens going forward. So I think we're checking all the boxes of what we need to do to make sure we're prepared and going forward, and that we, if we are able to obtain money for reimbursement for projects, we can have that available for the future, so.
And it looks like we might be in the market for a new Christmas tree, too. That took some, of all things, that took some...
You know, that happened in the, I think it was in the 80s. We had a snowstorm that came in, and, you know, redwoods aren't designed to hold snow load, and that poor tree got just ripped, and then it took a few years, and it never really filled out again. But, boy, I was amazed when I drove by it. There was, oof.
Yeah. Nick, your guys did a good job, though, of cleaning up that...
Not much you can do.
Yeah, it's just, it is what it is.
Didn't pick up the limbs.
All right, thank you. Any... Exactly. Any questions or comments on that one? All right. Okay, so thank you, Cleve. I appreciate the update. We'll move then on to the consent calendar. Ah, yes. Well, you can do any comments on 6.1 for the public. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the consent calendar. Item seven. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, will be enacted by one motion by roll call unless a member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. And we'll go ahead and open up a public comment on the consent calendar, and this is for items 7.1 through 7.6. Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council.
I'll move to approve consent calendar.
Second.
All right, first and second, seeing no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nell?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item eight, public comments for non-agendized items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda and as within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the city council. We'll go ahead and start with item 8.1, oral communications. Did we have any oral communications this evening? Yes, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, and congratulations to the Mayor and Vice Mayor. Those are always fun things to watch. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to share during public comment. For the record, my name is Brad Kane, and I'm the Director of Finance and Administration for Pioneer Community Energy. Pioneer Community Energy is a locally-owned, nonprofit electricity provider. We power the communities we serve, including the city of Placerville, with competitive rates, reliable service, and a choice of energy options. Pioneer has been serving the region for five years, Placerville and most of El Dorado County for the last year. The focus of our board has resulted in over $40 million in customer savings. Our governing board approved Pioneer's recent rate changes that support a discount that's greater than 19% when compared to PG&E's generation portion of the bill. This will result in a projected $1.5 million in savings for the city of Placerville customers and $46 million for all Pioneer customers in 2023. A Placerville household that is an average user of electricity, assuming 650 kilowatts per month, will save over $235 per year with Pioneer. As a reminder, we supply the electricity, but gas, transmission, distribution costs are from PG&E. High natural gas prices are driving up all of our utility bills right now. Pioneer has always been here to help, so here are a few pointers that can help reduce costs for your residents and businesses. Customers who previously chose to opt out of Pioneer services may want to opt in to benefit from the additional savings on electricity offered by Pioneer. Our website offers many low-to-no-cost energy-saving tips. Every effort has a lasting effect. Doing something as simple as turning off lights, adjusting your thermostat, or installing LED light bulbs can save on your monthly bill. For customers experiencing financial hardship, a section on our website provides information about programs that can help support bill repayment. For customers wishing to join Pioneer and realize the same great savings along with over 85% of their neighbors and local businesses, you can sign up online or simply call 844-937-7466. For more information, you can visit pioneercommunityenergy.org. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Brad, we'll, we can keep having people come up, but we'll have you come back at a later date where we'll schedule some time, just maybe do an update on how things are going, maybe in a few months. Get, come on up.
Good evening. Ryan Carter, Placerville resident. I want to address the comments of former Mayor Taylor in her State of the City speech on December 13th. In this speech, she stated that a small but loud group of folks tried to recall the entire city council over tyranny, except for Jackie, who was too new, and that Placerville voters shut that down. This comment and the way that it was delivered perfectly illustrates the frustration of a large number of your neighbors and constituents. First, the recall was not shut down by Placerville voters, it was shut down by the Caldoor fire. Everyone involved in the recall stopped gathering signatures and started helping their neighbors. That's what killed the recall. Second, her comment was that the recall was due to tyranny. It was not. The reasons were specifically listed as failure to protect, honor, and respect our history, heritage, and culture, failure to adequately represent us, respect us, and listen to our concerns, failure to address the homeless, failure to encourage transparency, failure to show fiscal restraint, failure to adequately protect and retain the city's historical assets, et cetera. All of these issues still exist as of today, and I'm hopeful that this new council will address these concerns with the seriousness they deserve instead of dismissing them and belittling the people that hold differing opinions as the last council did. Lastly, the recall did not make the ballot, but it was successful. All of the council members, save one mayor, that were targeted by the recall are no longer sitting on that stage. I guarantee you that the huge group of people that participated in that recall attempt take that as a victory. In conclusion, I want the council to remember that the residents of this city do not yet trust you. You must earn our trust. You can earn it through listening and respecting views that you don't agree with. You can earn it through transparency and communication. You can earn it through self-reflection and being able to admit publicly when you are wrong. And finally, you can earn it through acting with integrity and placing the interests of this city ahead of your own. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm just curious just to ask the board here, what is the long-term plan for the Gold Country Inn? Can anybody answer that for me, please?
You can go ahead and address your comments, and then we may make comments afterwards. This isn't a Q and A session.
I understand, but I've asked that question in the past, and just like the previous gentleman, I like the fact that I was never given an answer. There's no transparency. So I'll ask this again. What is the long-term plan for the Gold Country Inn? Nobody wants to answer, huh? You must know what's going on. Is it being converted? Is it being renovated to being another motel? Or is it being converted into something else that we don't know? And that's the question I'm asking you, the council.
Again, we'll, we, the way this works is you do public comments, and we may make up comments at the end.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville, member of the Measure H and L Committee. I noticed that we're doing some roadwork up at the very top of Big Cut Road and Party Way, and I am hoping to present a proposal for you to put in a guardrail where the three streets come together. We've got Party Way coming in, Big Cut, and then Big Cut turns and goes south. And people coming up Big Cut don't seem to realize all the time that they need to stop and then turn. And if they don't, they're gonna come right over the hill and down into the rock pile. And it would be very helpful to have a guardrail, at least across that section, so that they would realize that you can't just go speeding through. This isn't San Francisco. The road does not continue down the other side. It dumps into my backyard and the rock pile that goes up to Party Way. I had one person who failed to make that turn, and I was at home and heard this huge crash and went out on my patio and looked up the hill and saw headlights that were not going this way anymore. They were going sideways. So I called 911 and said, please send the police, an ambulance, and a tow truck. And then I heard the conversation going on up at the top of the hill, and somebody said, that really was a very nice truck, was. So to protect people and have them understand that they really need to turn, it would be helpful. The stop sign, they don't seem to realize is there. They just roll right on through it. So it would be helpful to have a guardrail to protect them from their own stupidity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good, wet evening. Nice to see you all, Jonathan Gainsborough. I've been to this podium 100 times, 100 plus, but first, I want to welcome the new council members. I think we have the opportunity to, to live up to our heritage in every regard. I don't know if El Dorado County was the first county, but this is where gold was discovered. Maybe there were other counties. Maybe you could address that afterward with the council comments. When we have 130-year deluge, or whether it was 350 or 450-year outpouring, I was so surprised to see the depth of the water on El Dorado's Main Street with George driving down it. And I think that we did a great job with that. I was very blessed to see the city council helping lead the supervisors from the shameful position that we've been in of being 10 or 15 years behind. I think that we don't behind in the issue of the homeless. We all remember Elliot. I bought him meals and tried to help him. You all did, hopefully, as well. Well, we used to have only one Elliot, but if you spend time at the Upper Room, as I do with a Bible study, two and a half hours twice a week for the last three years, you'd realize that the mental health quotient of the homeless is not one-third as they self-assess. I hope that the implementation of the respite concept and the compassion court, whatever they're calling it, which our governor passed, I hope that we can help lead the state and not drag behind. Our county still is one of only four counties with no year-round shelter. 54 other counties exceed us when we have a billion-dollar annual budget to lead the way from the county, but I commend you all for helping lead the way. The three-week delay on the Navigation Center from January 15th to February 6th is really deplorable. It's really unconscionable. When you and I are in our wormhouses, and you know you wouldn't leave your pets out when the wind is sounding like a freight train, and yet we have a cumulative number of 600 homeless, and, and not just the couple dozen on Upper Broadway, we have scores, maybe 200 that are sleeping in their cars and not even have the luxury of couch surfing. I, I see that it's gone to zeros. But I just want to commend us for moving ahead with the homeless issue, but they're out there tonight, and they're going to be through all the storms until we get the Navigation Center open. So let's see what we can add to our compassion to help them. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any more public comments? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments. This is in regards, I know the gentleman left in regards to the Gold Country Inn, but it's private property. City's not doing anything with Gold Country Inn, so I'm not exactly sure. If, I don't know, Pierre, if there's a, I don't know if somebody bought it, or it's...
Sure, I can give, excuse me, I can give some brief comments in regards of the Gold Country Inn. As most of you are probably aware, it's, it's an existing motel. It's been there for quite some time. It was developed in two different phases. There was Phase One, that was the development of the property to the, to the west. It comprised of two properties, and they expanded and built the adjoining building on the east side. And then it slowly, over time, fell into disrepair. In fact, I think it went into foreclosure. And so some new, new owner came in and bought it, and they applied for a new site plan review and to completely revamp the hotel. All-new interior, new exterior, new landscaping, some additional pertances, like an outside quad area, outside fire pit, and different things like that to kind of spruce it up. So they did come in with their building permits subsequent to the approval of the site plan review. The building permit is in play, and they are doing construction. Coincidentally, which would have been nice to explain to the gentleman, we had a chance to talk with the contractor last week. He came in, and we asked him, you know, why is it moving so slow? And the permit is still valid. It hasn't expired. So, but he basically said that it's a, it's an issue regarding obtaining the materials. I guess it's a, it's the, you know, the chain of different materials. They're not able to get them, and some of them are months off to get the windows, or he was explaining some of the materials that they're trying to obtain to construct, to reconstruct a hotel. So, you know, he apologized and, but said, we're just, you know, waiting to get the materials. So it's a, it's a supply chain issue that, at least from the perspective of the contractor, that why it's taking so long to complete the project.
All right, well, thank you.
And I would just say, just for the public record, all, all building permits and all files of the construction activities are all a public record. So we, we invite anybody, any members of the public that are interested in any project. They can come to our office, and we can show them the drawings, and they can review the permits issued, and really get into the weeds of any of the projects in town. So we encourage people to do that and come to our office if they're really interested in a particular project.
Great. Thank you, Pierre. And Cleve, did you?
Yeah, that's just what, his last statement I was gonna make, just agree. They're all public. They can come in and see those permits, review them, ask questions about them, and if we can answer them, we will, so.
Thank you. All right, that sounds good. So we'll move on then to item 8.2. Were there any written communications?
No, Mr. Mayor, there were no written communications.
All right, thank you, Regina. So then, go ahead and moving on, we have no items that were pulled from consent, no ordinance this evening or public hearings. So we'll move to item 12, and item 12.1, which is adopt, adopt a resolution, adopting the final mitigated negative declaration for Placerville Drive bike and pedestrian improvements, approving a budget appropriation in the amount of $100,000 from Measure L Fund. Three, approve Amendment Four for consulting services with Duberry Engineers. Four, authorize staff to issue notice to proceed with item number four with Duberry Engineers for said project. And five, authorize staff to prepare a project baseline agreement with the California Transportation Commission. And Ms. Neves has this item for us this evening. Thank you, Rebecca.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me to present this item to you this evening. The Placerville Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Facility Improvement Project at Hangtown Creek Bridge Replacement Project was also first identified as staff considered the ultimate and necessary improvements to the Placerville Drive corridor as a whole. It's important to note that this is a separate project with separate funding sources specific to each project. The one we're discussing at this, under this item, is the Placerville Drive Bike and Ped Project located on Placerville Drive between Armory and US 50 Undercrossing as it approaches Lower Main Street. The project proposes safe and accessible bicycle and pedestrian facilities, along with other multimodal improvements to the corridor. It also includes construction of sidewalks and bike lanes on Green Valley Road from Placerville Drive to Mallard Lane up where the Boys and Girls Club is. The California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, document prepared for this project consists of an initial study and a proposed mitigated negative declaration, or an IS MND for short. This project... This project assessed potential project impacts related to aesthetics, agricultural resources, air quality, biological, cultural, hazardous waste, noise, recreation, traffic and transportation, tribal, utilities, and wildfire. The document findings are summarized in staff's report, and it was found that no substantial evidence exists that the proposed project would have a significant or adverse effect on the environment. The environmental document was released for a 30-day public review period beginning on November 9th and ending on December 9th. At the conclusion of the review period, the city received comments from the State Regional Water Quality Control Board only, with no public comment received. And those comments are included and addressed in the attached IS MND and within the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. Adoption of the MND, the mitigated negative declaration, this evening allows for approval of the project, filing of the notice of determination, and allows the project to advance towards the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, which is the federal environmental clearance process for the project, and ultimately, final design and right-of-way. I want to touch a little bit on funding because I know that, you know, having the previous meeting covered the item related to the bridge, and then now we're looking at the bike and pedestrian project, I know that it can be a lot and it's kind of confusing, so I did want to kind of cover the similarities and differences of what the two projects actually entail. So the other action items in this evening's item is to include a budget appropriation to meet local match requirements for the project, along with approving the amendment of the consultant's contract for the bike and ped project that allows the project to then advance into the delivery and final design stage. The difference with this project is this project, the environmental document, design and right-of-way, are funded through congestion mitigation and air quality, or CMAC for short. Don't worry, I'll be sending you all an acronym list, I usually do that before the first meeting of the year, and I apologize, I haven't done that yet, as well as Regional Active Transportation Program, or ATP for short, through SACOG, which is the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. Both of these funding sources provided through and through the support of the El Dorado County Transportation Commission, and these funds were used to fund the environmental document, design, and right-of-way. And they can only be used on improvements for multimodal means of transportation, including but not limited to specifically sidewalks, bike lanes, Class 1 trails, park and ride facilities, and other transit facilities. Although this project before you this evening may seem like deja vu from the previous meeting's item related to the Placerville Drive Bridge, they are in fact separate projects with very distinct and separate funding, hence the need for two separate environmental documents. Where the two are related and overlap is how they create the travel space in the overall corridor, and that has been coordinated closely. You may recall from the previous meeting that the city has been working to replace the bridge since its initial inception into the Federal Highway Bridge Program, HBP, in 1997, and that project is specifically funded for the bridge only through the Highway Bridge Program. That does not cover roadway improvements in the overall corridor. However, that project ran into several design challenges that caused the preliminary engineering to stall. One of those design challenges included designing a bridge prism with the right amount of lanes and active transportation facilities that the community wants and needs on Placerville Drive. So basically, when it came time to look at the bridge, we actually had to look at the whole corridor. The other thing that both of these projects share is that both their design and construction are fully funded. Yay! The HBP will pay for design and construction of the bridge, and the 1.78 million in CMAC and the 1.2 million in regional ATP funds paid for the environmental design and right-of-way for this bike and ped project. And the city was also successful in receiving state active transportation funding from the California Transportation Commission, the CTC, in the highly competitive recent round of Cycle 6 funds to the tune of $15.4 million. Combined with the total cost of the construction for both the bridge and the bike and ped project, the corridor improvements and investments is around 30 million in federal funds with minimal local match funds provided by Measure H and L, and this is a prime example of how we're able to prudently leverage our precious local dollars to deliver large-scale projects that our community needs and deserves. Based on the results of the IS MND, the proposed project would not have any significant impacts on the environment once mitigation measures are implemented. This conclusion is supported by the following findings. One, the proposed project would not impact agricultural and forestry resources, mineral resources, and population and housing. Two, the project would have a less than significant impact on air quality, energy, greenhouse gas emissions, geology, soils, hazard, hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, land use, planning, noise, recreation, utilities, and service systems. Once mitigation measures are implemented, the proposed project would have a less than significant impact on aesthetics, biological resources, cultural resources, public services, transportation, tribal, cultural resources, and wildfire, and no substantial evidence exists that the proposed project would have a significant or adverse effect on the environment. So as stated earlier, the action before you is to adopt and approve the final initial study mitigated negative declaration prepared for the Placerville Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Project pursuant to the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and approving the project, adopt the project mitigation monitoring and reporting program in accordance with Section 15097 of the state SEQA guidelines, and approving a budget appropriation from the Measure L Fund, approving Amendment Number Four to the consultant's services agreement with DeBery Engineers, and authorizing staff to issue the notice to proceed, and so that one of these days when we can actually receive our construction funding for our state ATP funds, then authorizing currently staff to enter into a project baseline agreement with the California Transportation Commission and Caltrans to receive those ATP funds for construction funding in the future. That concludes staff's report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any questions at this point for Rebecca? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up this item for public comment.
Peggy Vanderkorn, excuse me, Placerville, I just want to commend you folks for moving ahead on something that increases bike and pedestrian abilities in this town. We are so sorely lacking in the ability to generally get around town, especially right off of Main Street, safely by foot. And so, commendations, thank you.
Sue Rodman, Measure H and Measure L Committee Member. And I am so glad to see this one going forward and very happy to congratulate the citizens of Placerville who were forward-thinking enough to vote for Measure H and Measure L to provide this matching funds. So, hooray. This should be a big improvement along Placerville Drive.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. I just have one question. So assuming everything, under the best scenarios, what's our, like, start here on this project?
If everything goes smoothly with right-of-way, because that's the unknown factor is the time for that, it can take six months or it can take 24 months.
Yep.
If it takes six months to a year, we could start construction as soon as 2024.
All right, that sounds about right. All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, I will entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, just one thing I was noticing in both the resolution and the recommendations, probably under Number One include that you're also adopting the mitigation monitoring report.
Yes, I apologize, that was left out of the...
Oh, great, understood.
It's kind of a package deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll move the staff recommendation with the notation about the monitoring and mitigation report.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor No?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rebecca. This is a huge monumental item here, so thanks again for all the hard work on this one. All right, moving on to item 12.2, which is approving Amendment Four for consulting services with DeBery Engineers for the Hangtown Creek Bridge Replacement Project, approving 100,000 budget appropriation from Measure L Fund, and three, authorizing staff to issue notice to proceed to item number three with DeBery Engineers. And again, Rebecca has this report for us.
I bored you all to tears with the previous one, so this one should be pretty cut and dry. This is actually for the bridge project, and the intent of the item before you is to just basically approve the consultant's contract amendment and issue the notice to proceed that will then allow the work to actually start, along with a budget appropriation from the Measure L Fund as required as part of the federal funding local match for the Highway Bridge Program. You know, when we do these projects, we have to kind of eat the elephant one bite at a time, and that means getting funding as it gets released to us, then, you know, saying, okay, now you can go take care of final design, and then we wait for more funding. Okay, now you can go take care of utility relocation. And so on projects, especially this scale, I know that, you know, a fair amount of you guys are kind of used to this, but just kind of for the public's information is that these projects really do have to be delivered in incremental and thoughtful steps. And this is one of those incremental and thoughtful steps where we get the additional funding appropriated to the project, and then we allow approval of that portion of the consultant's contract to commence with final design. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Sure.
Questions, comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
I probably should have asked you this at some other time, but I'm noticing on this picture, there's a pipe. What is that pipe? Is that water? Is that the main?
Which picture are you referring to?
The one that's this one, this one here, the exhibit.
Oh, okay.
There's a pipe.
Underneath the bridge.
Underneath the bridge.
Underneath the bridge.
The current picture.
Yes, that is a pipe.
Thank you. All right, you're going to make me do this, huh? Okay. What is that pipe for?
Well, we have sewer and water in that area. We have EID water and city sewer. That's EID water.
So that's the water line. Yeah, the one that's suspended, not the, I know the sewer pipe.
Yeah, there's two pipes, the transverse pipe is sewer, that one's in the creek, that's ours.
Yeah, that's ours. No, I was referring to the one that's hanging there.
Yes.
So that's the EID main right there.
Yeah, it's suspended to the bridge, which we have a lot of those kind of scenarios. You may recall when we built Blair's Lane in 2016, we do have a water main attached to the side as well as a sewer main.
I'm curious how the design for the new bridge will incorporate that feature. Is it still going to just be hanging there?
It will, they have details for that, and they'll put it on the downstream side so that it doesn't get damaged in any kind of storm or debris.
Right, right.
But yeah, I mean, you know, it's actually the preference of the utility.
To actually, yeah.
Exactly. You have to be able to access it, you don't want to access it through ducts in the bridge.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
That was my question.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment.
Sue Rodman, Measure H, Measure L, and I am really happy that our Measure L Committee and Measure H Committee said, yes, we certainly do want to put this money towards this project and get rid of the worst bridge in all Placerville. So, go get them.
Any other public comments on item 12.2? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comments, bring it back to the Any further discussion on 12.2? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation on 12.2, 1, 2, and 3.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor No?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks again, Rebecca, and thanks again, Measure H and L. Moving on to item 12.3, and that's appointing two council members to serve as the ad hoc selection committee to select our two members of the cannabis community benefits committee for the city of Placerville. It just sounded all wrong, but I think I read that right. And Mr. Morris has this for us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This one's been before you a couple of times, and we've been going through a process on this. As you know, when we adopted our cannabis ordinance and tax, we adopted a 1% community benefit fund as part of that, which means each cannabis business contributes an additional 1% towards the fund that can be used for various projects up to the discretion of the city council, basically. So the discussion has been, how do we work through that? We adopted a committee, and that came back to you previously. The committee is made up of the chief of police, or designate, city manager or designate, the director of community services, two public members, and then a representative from each of our two cannabis businesses. So the purpose of this item tonight is for the council to, for the mayor to appoint two council members to serve on that selection committee. I believe, Regina, we've received five or six applications? Six applications? Thank you. And so at the time of, we wrote this report, I think we only had two, I think is what it said there, but we do have six now. So there are more for you to interview. So whoever is appointed will work with you to interview those and select those two, and then bring it back to the council for formal appointment of those to the committee. In the application, I believe we said we would look at interviewing next week so that we hope to have this ready for you at your next council meeting. So with that, I'll turn it back to the mayor. In order to keep this as just a simple ad hoc committee, the mayor should just appoint these, it does not require formal council action.
All right, sounds good. Well, I want to do this, I'll go ahead, I know we haven't had discussion yet, but let me go ahead and open this up. I'd be interested to hear any public comments on this item, so we'll go ahead and open it up for public comments. All right, perfect, see, I had a premonition on that. All right, great, so we'll go ahead and close public comments, bring it back to the council. Not sure who's interested. I don't know what Councilmember Clarici's schedule is like, but since he was on the original sort of committee that went through this.
No, we went through it already.
Yes, it would kind of make sense to have John on this, but I just want to see if that's...
And we have consistently, people have asked us, well, when will the meetings be held? We're going to wait till we get the committee together and let them select those dates and times, so it'll be flexible for them. If it ain't on Wednesday or Thursday, I can do it, otherwise, actually, let me check the 20th, too. My week is fairly impacted, but, you know, I guess if we did it early in the week, no, I'll be on the road.
Zoom interviews?
We could, but no.
All right.
Yeah. If you cannot ask to other people, then I will be happy to do it.
I'm happy to serve and I'm happy to yield to my other fellow members. I'm available or they're...
Any other interest from colleagues here?
I'm happy to do it as well. I'm obviously restricted, that'll have to be in the evenings, but if we can make that work, I can do it.
David?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to do it. My schedule's probably a little bit easier to manage than John's, so.
All right, so, who really wants to do it?
To the left.
All right, well, then, I'm going to go ahead and appoint David and Jackie, it sounds like you have the most flexibility in getting the time to get these done by our next council meeting. So, good luck with, I'm glad we have six people actually that want to serve on this. You know, we've had, I mean, six would be a lot even for planning commission, we've had sometimes two or none, so I am actually heartened that we have a few people putting their names forward, so we're looking forward to see what those recommendations will be. So thank you both for volunteering. All right, so I've done that, do I, we don't even do anything else then, right? We've just named them. All right, cool. All right, easy enough. All right, so then I will move on then to item 12.4, this is our last item, item 12, and that's adopt a resolution extending the MOU between the city of Placerville and Housing El Dorado for use of Scout Hall as a temporary inclement weather overnight warming center through February 15th. And Mr. Morris has this report for us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council, as you recall, earlier this year, you approved an MOU with Housing El Dorado to operate an inclement weather shelter, warming center if you will, at the Scout Hall located at 3071 Benham Street. Again, it only operates during inclement weather, which we've had quite a bit of lately, as you can know. So I think it's been operating fairly regularly, more so than they expected, but anyway. And... And the idea was, we put that through January 31st was what the MOU runs through, with the anticipation that originally the navigation center the county is opening was going to open on January, around January 15th, January 16th. Originally, the date was January 16th that they established. Unfortunately, they have not been able to get that ready to go yet. I talked to the CAO today, and he confirmed that as of now, the date now is February 6th that that facility will open. We received a request from Housing Eldorado then to extend that agreement to continue the inclement weather facility, hopefully until after that is open, which I, we then established February 15th is, should give us a week and a half after that actually opens to make that transition into the new facility. So the recommendation from staff before you tonight is to go ahead and approve that extension of the MOU with Housing Eldorado through February 15th, 2023. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
All right. Thank you, Cleve. Any questions at this point? I do have, have we had any calls for service since we opened this?
None, none that I'm aware of, and I'm seeing Chief Ren saying no. Other than, we blew a fuse and had to go throw a breaker, but nothing, nothing major.
That's understandable.
Yeah, so we pushed this out to February 6th, and then if it comes back February 6th that they're not done yet, I just don't want to keep kicking the can down the road. Is there any point in time that we'll be looking to the CAO to come answer questions and see what we've really got going on here?
That's up to the council. We could do that, or I can get a report from them on what's the holdup. And I've been given some things, but I don't know the whole story of, you know, what the delay is. I understand that the facility is pretty much ready to go, and they're working on gearing up the staffing to staff the facility, so.
And I agree with that, because I think, you know, we, we've done our, we've more than done our part to help with this process, much more so from a municipality that represents 10% of Eldorado County. And sometimes we always get treated as equal partners in this 7%. We get treated as equal partners when we are not an equal partner in that, in major policy issues that affect Eldorado County. So, thank you for those, for those comments. Okay, so with that...
Mayor, could I, just a couple more comments. One minute. Just so you know, Don and Peg Van De Car are here tonight representing Housing Eldorado. If you have questions for them, and they can speak during the public. Also, I did ask a question today of some of the representatives of Housing Eldorado. If, I got asked if, if there are still people out there that are not, you know, able to get in. It's my understanding that they still, they have not filled up for most nights. They usually have two or three slots open. So it is, from my perspective, we're meeting that need of those that want to go in the facility. So, just for your information.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Cleve. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, seen none, we'll go ahead and open up for public comments.
Peg Van De Car, Secretary Housing Eldorado Board. First, I want to commend and thank the city for its compassion and working with us to provide some shelter under far more inclement weather days than we imagined. And I know you've all been through the, well, last night it was 4:00, 4:00 AM when the whole world kind of came apart. Imagine being outdoors during that or on the hill. So, we would like to see this MOU extended, and we, it's been noted there have been no calls for legal things or not. A couple of times I found somebody playing in the playground or trying to play in the playground on a night that was like 32 degrees. A young couple was headed that way, and I said, I was in my car, just leaving, and I said, where are you going? And they said, to the playground, to the swings, the playground. A young woman and a young man, and they were in a very fancy car. And I said, no, not tonight. Like, I had no authority, but, and they said, why? And I said, it's too cold. It's too cold. Well, they turned around and laughed, so, anyway. Yay, authority. Last night, I was one of the shelter volunteers from 8:00 to 11:00 tonight. Don and I will both be there again. And when I arrived at 8:00, the, I'm just trying to give you the ambiance, the lights were out. Almost everybody was in bed. It was one of the high census nights. We had 14, I think. And some of them were women as well. And it was extremely quiet, other than the movie that was on. It was a comedy movie that night, which was very helpful. So, thank you. I hope that you would pass this, and I don't know where the end time is either. We have the same questions you do about the juvenile hall shelter, and I would like to know the answers and see it moving ahead. I don't think it's going to be able to serve everybody that needs serving, but it may serve everybody that wants serving. I don't know how that's going to work out, so we're doing, we, the county. And you folks may be 10% of the county, but your hearts are a lot bigger than 10% of the county. So, thank you. If you have any other questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ryan Carter. I am a little disappointed. When I spoke about this item, I think it was about a month ago when it was first brought to the council, I pointed out a couple of blatantly illegal policies in the handbook, particularly regarding property and narcotics. And it seems like this would have been a good opportunity for, to renew this MOU, that you would have addressed those issues and taken that blatantly illegal language out of, out of this contract, but it's the same that it was last time. So I must say, I'm a little disappointed that that wasn't addressed. Other than that, I think the shelter's doing a great job. I'm glad to hear that it's been running smooth, but it just seems odd not to address the blatantly illegal language in the MOU. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident, and this is in my neighborhood, and I have seen no problems whatever, and I am really glad to see the city stepping up and doing this for our people, because these are our, our neighbors, our brothers and sisters. And to have them out in the storm without any shelter was really horrible, and to see us at least step up and do Scout Hall is a wonderful thing, and that, kadoos. And if it has to go to March 15th, it won't bother me at all.
Thank you, Sue.
Good evening again, Jonathan Gainsborough. Just a couple of comments. One, I want to ask your prayers for Jane. She has a aorta blockage operation Thursday morning, and so I'll be driving her to Sutter, but if you would pray for her, Jane McGinnis. She's one of the great servant-hearted people in our county, as are all of you on the council. Tonight, it exceeded the number one count. There were 15 and growing signups for the inclement weather shelter tonight before I left the upper room at 20 of 5, and they hadn't, those weren't counting other locations. I don't know if they reached saturation, but if, if we could think ahead, which we've got to do, when the Volunteers of America, which should already have their staff, but they didn't as of a week ago or whatever, they're not going to be able to sign people up and matriculate them into the navigation center in a week or two. And if you would continue providing a world-class animal shelter, as we spent several million dollars on here in the county for stray dogs and uncared-for, unloved pets, cats, et cetera. I love Sue Rodman's comment that maybe we do have to stretch our compassion beyond the February 15th, which is only nine days or eight days beyond February 6th. So maybe we need to be thinking ahead there because, yeah, I see those seconds running. Being conversant with the people on the Broadway Hill as much as anybody in the county that's not living there, it will take a while, and we, I hope that what was spoken in the state, the state of the year, or the state of the whatever, the state of the city, it was spoken that once we get the navigation center, we'll be able to enforce our camping, our anti-camping I hope that sounds as distasteful to you as it does to the God who has blessed you to be in power here to care for the least, the last, and the lost. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Don Van De Car, 44 years president of the county, of the city, actually, and also on the board of directors of Housing Eldorado. I cannot add to what my wife has said since she covered it so well, but again, I want to thank you for your part in, in working the homeless issue. It will not go away, and I do have to agree, there will be issues following the development that the county is doing. But we're on the way, and I've been working this with homeless issues for a good part of our tenure here, and appreciate we've come so far, and we will need to keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seen no one else stepping up, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Mona, I was going to have you comment on the MOU.
Yes, please. Yes, I would like to comment on that. Thank you. I have reviewed the MOU, and I find that there are no illegal provisions in it. Actually, this answer was asked and answered at the last meeting, but I would like to respond to formally have it on the record. This MOU is essentially a use agreement between the city and Housing Eldorado. The relationship between Housing Eldorado and its customers is that of a private agreement between those two. The MOU has certain requirements for Housing Eldorado to meet and achieve. They cannot commit waste. They cannot, of course, commit any illegal acts of that nature, but they're also required to comply with their own responsibilities that they've outlined, and that's, I think, attachment four to the staff report. So they're committing to comply with that. The police chief also responded, and this is a true statement in terms of this agreement and any agreement within the city, that if illegal acts are committed within the city, those will be addressed by the police department. So there is no ability for clients, Housing Eldorado, or any individual to commit an illegal act on city property and not have that have the normal repercussions.
Okay. Thank you, Mona, for that clarification. All right, okay. So with that, we'll go ahead and bringing, thank you for the clarification, and we'll go ahead and bring it back for further discussion with the council.
Well, I agree with David. I'm willing to extend this to the 15th, but beyond that, I think that the county needs to come have a conversation with us and be accountable for what's going on and a little bit more conversation.
Yeah, I would agree with that also. It was funny, it's one of those things when you set hard dates in these kinds of environments. When I heard that they said, whatever that January date was, when I heard that a couple months ago, I went, there is no way, there is no way they're bringing this thing online in January. And they would have been much better off if they had been a bit more realistic. I think there was a certain amount of pressure, just given what was going on at the county with this particular subject, to kind of gussy it up and say, oh, yeah, we'll be ready, and we'll be ready, but I was shocked when I heard that date. I went, yeah, good luck. And, you know, if you can hit it, fine, but I never had any expectation that that would actually be the date that they would be hitting, so this doesn't surprise me at all. Yeah, they, you know, we should find out what's going on, and my guess is the staffing thing, even though it is an established organization, the idea that they could, you know, that they might still have some staffing issues is outside the realm of possibility.
Yeah, the thing is, you can see almost every business that has a sign in the window that says, help, help wanted, that, yeah. It continues to be a problem everywhere.
Marshall Hospital has 100 open positions right now. Well, yeah.
I think the City of Davis told me they had four planning, planning positions that are open that are very, very good positions at the City of Davis that they cannot find people to want to come and work there. So it's definitely a challenge, I'll say that.
I would just add, I think it's important that, you know, we don't, in the significant storms that we're having with trees going down and everything else, that we have a safe place, that people can go in those storms so that they're not, you know, camping in tents under potential tree fall or flooding or other hazards, so.
Great. Okay. So with that, do we have a motion on this item?
I will make a motion to extend the MOU to February 15th as recommended.
I'll second that motion.
All right, thank you. Seen no further comments.
And by the motion, also adopting the resolution.
Yes.
The staff recommendation.
Yeah, I think I said the staff recommendation, so that would incorporate that.
Thank you. All right, so with, with that, we will go ahead and have roll call.
Councilmember Clarici.
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nell.
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, going on to item 13, which are council reports from other agencies. I think this will be quick, because I don't think anyone's met, but we'll go ahead and have these. Yeah, and I, that's the other thing, is these will be coming, so Transit Authority.
Didn't meet.
Transportation Commission, we don't, we don't have anybody either right now.
On the alternate.
Oh, okay, good. All right. So we have all, all right. We were still present then. Lafco.
Did not meet.
SECOG, we did not meet. Will meet on the 19th of January. Pioneer, did not meet. Placerville Fire Safe Council.
They did meet. Basically, they're working on expanding their jurisdiction to kind of cover the gaps in the fire-wise communities, so they're having that discussion. It's an ongoing discussion.
All right. City and county, two by two, did not meet. Opportunity not continuum of care. There's an upcoming meeting. I did miss one while I was on vacation, but I think it was just, there was, I went through the minutes, I didn't see anything that really stood out from a, a policy standpoint affecting the city, so. I know they were looking for some more committee members. There's been a lot of movement on that, on that board as well. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to item 14. You have...
I have a couple.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
No problem.
Actually, this isn't a request for an agenda item, but it is something that I had brought up to staff. I've talked to Cleve about it, and I think the previous council took an action to, to hire someone, and that is, I would like to look at re, and I've talked, I think I even mentioned it to you.
Yeah.
To reinvigorate, reestablish, re, some word, re-something, the historic, was it a...
Historical Advisory Commission.
Advisory thing? Yeah, I forgot what it was called. The, yeah, that thing. And to, and I understand there's going to be like, you're going to hire a consultant to do like a survey or something and do some stuff, so that's great, and maybe that'll all kind of net fit together, but I'd like that to, at some point, come back to the council and, and think about that. I have some thoughts of, on the issue. And this is just not really a thing for an agenda item, but I, since there's really no place left to say this. We'll have a number of positions open. There was one peak position open, there's now two because I left the peak. We have at least one planning commission opening. There might be others I don't know of. For folks, and I would certainly encourage the folks that ran for city council, if you want to be engaged, that's the way you do it. You go out and you volunteer for one of these committees and commissions. That's what I've done. I've been doing it since 90, I was on the Park and Rec Commission, I was on the peak. Those are real valuable things, and you can learn a lot about how the city runs. And they're good, and you...
And they're good, and you serve the city, and there's openings. So I would strongly encourage anybody to do that, but certainly the folks that, that ran in the last election, it would do well. They would do well by trying to get on those, those boards. That's it.
All right, thank you, John. Any other, yes, Mona?
Can we get public comment on item 13?
Oh, yes. We don't, oh, okay.
Well, there were reports.
Absolutely. So any, any, I, yes. On item 13, if there's any public comments on item 13. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that, bring it back on 14. Any other, and I, I agree with, with John, I, I do think there's a role to play for the Historical Advisory Committee Commission, I forget. I was on that for a couple of years myself back in the day, as well as on, on Planning Commission. So I agree with folks that, whether they ran or thinking about it, you know, certainly a good place to learn to understand how Placerville works and to be civically engaged and involved with, with the, with the city.
And I, I think just for the historical accuracy for the Historical Committee Commission, whatever the heck it was called, we did not kill that thing. It died all on its own. We, it was a seven-member board, and I think when it came back, because I was on the council, when it came back, there might have been three people on it, and we could not get anybody to apply to that.
Yeah.
So for all these folks that sit around and talk about the history of this town, when it actually comes around to protecting the history of this town, it's hard to get people to actually engage in that. And so this was not a city thing. This was literally a lack of interest, and that needs to be in the public record, because I still read about how the councils, plural, hate the city, hate its history, and they always mention that, and I was here when it happened, and we literally could not get anybody to apply for the positions. And we put that thing out there for months at a time. Well, you were on there, I think, when it probably when it got.
Yeah, and it was just a lack of interest.
Yeah, we couldn't get anybody to volunteer for it, so.
And you had applicants complaining too about having to go to, to Historical Advisory Commission and then have to go to Planning Commission as well.
Yeah.
So there was a, there was also pushback from applicants to have to go through three potential layers to get, you know, if it had, if it got, if Planning Commission either denied or whatever, you know, then you're going through three layers of government to get, to get to something. So there was definitely complaints about the, the committee.
So, and that might be in this reevaluation of it, something we can look at.
Yeah.
But anyway, I just, I just thought I'd say that.
Yep, yeah, and we did allocate $10,000 in the last budget, you know, as a sort of a set aside, and I know, you know, Pierre and I have talked about this a little bit, about what that looks like as we look at our historical, you know, inventory going forward, and we know that's just a small little, you know, amount that was just put aside to even look at what that might look like, to redo some of those historical inventories, and, and the Historical Advisory Committee could certainly be, you know, part of that conversation, at least better inform us of what everything might look like, so.
So we do need a majority consensus if you wish for that to come back at some point? We've got two, we need at least another person to agree?
At some point?
Well, a future agenda.
I don't know if I want to go, I brought it up here, but they're already planning to do something, so I don't know if I want to get ahead of that process.
Yeah, Mayor, if staff could make a comment. Some time ago, the city council approved $10,000 allocation to conduct a joint Planning Commission City Council workshop, and so, and we apologize it's taken so long, we got into the holidays, but we will be seeking a professional architect that is involved with rehabilitation of historic buildings to provide for that workshop. And I think what comes out of that workshop would be then further direction to staff on what, what, what does our treatment of our historic districts look like.
Okay, so I would defer to that, since it's already in the works.
I would defer, people hear me. I would defer to that, since it's already in the works, and then we can decide if we want to, well, we will eventually, but have to do an agenda item, but let's let that process go, and that could help inform all this other stuff.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other, anything else on item 14? I'll go ahead and open up item 14 for any public comments. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close item 14 and bring it to item 15, which are city manager and staff reports, and item 15.1, which is our police report for December of 2022. And Chief Wren, do you have anything you wanted to highlight?
Just that, you know, if you, if you recall from the last several months, December looks a lot like what we've been experiencing, but what this doesn't tell you is that we, we experienced some, some critical staffing shortages in December due to illnesses. We had a couple officers that introduced new children into their family, so they were off, and we lost an officer to a regional agency, so. Looking at these statistics, I'm proud that our organization was able to maintain that continuity of operation and still deliver that service, knowing that many of them were working double shifts a lot of the time, so it just, it just goes, it reinforces that the commitment that our officers have to the city, so. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? All right, I'll open up 15.1 for any public comments. All right, seeing none.
We have great points to discuss.
Yes, we do. Absolutely. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comments, and item 15, we'll go ahead and receive.
Mayor, can I, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, absolutely.
No, I, I want a, one more item under staff report, so if you want to finish 15.1, so.
Yep, I think, I think we're good there, right?
Yeah. Okay. So I wanted to talk about, I've, I think sent the information out to you January 31st, we would like to hold a workshop with the council. The topics that we've looked at is a review of our governance handbook, which I've provided to each of you, I think, hopefully you have it. The city council handbook, which is another document that we have that we just want to review and go through those, make changes or recommend changes if we want to look at those. The, our strategic plan, we would like to have a review of that. And then finally, we would like to have a, just a short review of what I'll call Budget 101, to introduce our new council members to our budget process, which we are going into. I am not sure how long this will take. It could take an entire afternoon. I don't, I know that Councilmember Gottberg, probably not available in an afternoon, so I wanted to see what, what your preference is. We may need to maybe break it down into a couple of sessions if necessary, at your discretion, but maybe see how far we can get. What's the earliest that you can meet, Councilmember Gottberg? Four?
Around four.
Around four?
Yeah.
So we could do a four to seven thing, if you wanted to do something like that. I, I want to, I want to try to limit respectful of everybody's time. That's a fifth Tuesday is what we want to try and do those workshops on, to take advantage of that, just so you know, because it's usually, usually this building is reserved for that, and we don't have any other meetings scheduled on that, that Tuesday, so if you're okay with that, I'll start putting that together. Does a four to seven timeframe sound okay to you?
Pizza.
I'll, I'll bring pizza for John, and we'll be good.
It's fine for me.
All right, that works, yeah, that looks, that looks good.
Okay, and if there's any other topics for the future that you think you want to do something, this is a good opportunity for us to sit down. We sit down here around a table and invite everybody to participate in, in more of an informal setting to talk about these things and discuss where we want to go, so.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other staff reports?
No.
All right. Okay, so we'll go to item 16, which are upcoming items, and I'll, I'll let people read that at their leisure, so that brings us to item 17, which is adjournment, and at 6:20, I will go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting of the Placerville City Council. So thank you, everybody. Good evening.